Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your patience as we get started this morning. Often before city council meetings, we take a moment before the official business starts to recognize important moments in our city. And this morning, we begin with honoring Black History Month. And I'll turn it over to Council Vice President to make this presentation.
Well, thank you, Council President Bender. And what an honor it is to recognize the contributions of African-Americans to this country, to this state, and to this city. 2019 marks the 400th anniversary, is that a good word? The 400th year of enslaved Africans arriving on the shores of the United States of America. And since that time, African-Americans have done a tremendous amount of work and contributions to make this a better country and live up to its values. And so today, we are offering this resolution honoring Black History Month. And it says, whereas since 1926, the creation of Negro History Week by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the accomplishments of persons of African descent have been recognized each February. And whereas the month of February is observed nationally as Black History Month to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of Black Americans have made and continue to offer to this nation. And whereas we recognize this Black History Month, that 2019 marks 400 years since the arrival of the first enslaved Africans in America, and 400 years of resistance and continued steadfast determination to reclaim Black humanity and Black liberation. And...
Whereas Black History Month acknowledges and honors numerous past and present educators, scientists, activists, pioneers, leaders, artists, inventors, entrepreneurs, and elders with special ceremonies and activities. And in 2016, to celebrate Black History Month, the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights introduced Future History Makers, renamed History Makers at Home, a profile series featuring emerging and mid-career leaders from the Twin Cities African-American community who share the department's ideals of advancing civil rights and removing barriers to equity. And the department identifies trendsetters in the areas of business, criminal justice, education, economic development, health, philanthropy, housing, and government, and defines them as History Makers at Home. And the department also recognizes the kinship of the work of trend-setting history makers to those who are legacy trailblazers. And...
And whereas to support and foster our own history makers at home in the City of Minneapolis Enterprise and Employee Resource Group to support Black city employees, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network was created on February 23, 2017. And whereas each week throughout Black History Month, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network uplifts History Makers at Home, hosting events that shine the light on dedicated leaders in the Twin Cities region, and shares the stories of those who are making a positive impact and inspiring future generations, as well as recognizing legacy leaders who paved the path. And...
Whereas on February 23, 2019, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network will proudly celebrate its two-year anniversary. And whereas the Minneapolis Black Employee Network offers Black city employees peer support, mentoring, professional development, career counseling, and well-being supportive services. And whereas the Minneapolis Black Employee Network offers the City of Minneapolis recommendations on action steps to recruit, retain, support, and engage Black leaders to the city's workforce. And whereas each year, we will continue to highlight dedicated Black leaders in the City of Minneapolis and the Twin Cities region, and in 2019, highlight the commemoration of 400 years of resistance and Black liberation. And whereas reparations are owed, I'm just kidding, it doesn't say that. Right, right, right. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, be it resolved, that the mayor and city council do hereby commemorate the achievements of Black Americans as history makers and legacy trailblazers, and their role in the development of the region and the nation since its inception. And we join in recognizing the annual celebration of Black History Month and the anniversary of the Minneapolis Black Employee Network. Thank you.
I just wanted to say something really quick because here is an opportunity for us as four Black council members. I just want to be able to name that being a descendant of enslaved Africans is something that I hold very dearly in my heart and take very seriously in this position of power. If you come into my office, you'll actually see there's a black and white photo on my desk. It's of my great-grandfather, great-granddaddy Woods, who was actually born into slavery. That was the last person in my family who was born into slavery. I have his picture on my desk because we've come that far, we've come this far in only a few generations. And I absolutely feel 100% in my bones the obligation to be able to keep moving forward and being able to dismantle the systems of white supremacy that have caused the disparities that we see today. So I just want to name that. I am proud to be a descendant of enslaved Africans, and I'm proud to be here now in this position of power, being able to dismantle what we have seen historically so that we can set up future generations to be able to thrive.
Thank you all so much. Amazing. And there are all kinds of celebrations and thoughtful poetry and things happening at City Hall all month long. So thanks to all of the staff who've really put so much effort into planning all of those and all that you do. Next, we have our second honorary resolution with Councilmember Gordon coming down. And this one is declaring February 17 Willie Murphy Day in the City of Minneapolis.
And there's a couple people, I think, who are going to join.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. No, Robin told me I couldn't sing. But I do have some lyrics I'm going to read after I read the resolution. Yeah, yeah, welcome. Glad to have you here. So for those of you who might not know, Willie Murphy was a longtime Minneapolis resident who passed away in January. There's going to be a memorial for him on Saturday, and then there's a celebration of his life on Sunday, which is February 17. And so we're declaring February 17 Willie Murphy Day in the City of Minneapolis. Whereas Willie Murphy was a talented, respected, and prolific Minneapolis composer and performer who was regarded as a leader of the West Bank scene and an inspiration to generations of musicians of all genres. And whereas Willie Murphy kept on rocking the boat and inspired generations of listeners to do the same, in spite of the fact that we are living in a supermarket where everything's for sale. He motivated us to speak out against injustice. And whereas Willie Murphy toured with Spider John Kerner, with whom he recorded the seminal 1969 record Running, Jumping, Standing Still, which was cited as a favorite of John Lennon. And whereas Willie Murphy was offered a label producer position with Elektra, but instead chose to continue living in Minneapolis, producing numerous artists' records and performing solo with The Beez and with such other bands as the Angel-headed Hipsters. And whereas Willie Murphy was a true creative inspiration, not only through his music, but also his passion for cinema and world literature. And whereas in 1971, Willie Murphy produced Bonnie Raitt's debut album, and Willie and the Beez were her backing band through the entire album, which was released on Warner Brothers. And whereas in 1990, when the Minnesota Music Academy launched the Minnesota Music Hall of Fame, Willie Murphy joined Prince and Bob Dylan as the inaugural inductees. And whereas in the first year of the Mill City Music Festival in 1996, he was proclaimed mayor of Mill City. And whereas a Star Tribune poll in 1997 listed Willie and the Beez in the top 10 of the best local live bands of all time. And whereas Willie Murphy passed away in January 2019. And whereas the Caboose Music Club will host the event Fairy Tales: A Celebration of the Life and Music of Willie Murphy on Sunday, February 17, 2019. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby declare February 17, 2019, as Willie Murphy Day in the City of Minneapolis. And that's signed by the council president and the mayor, and also our city clerk. Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to say thank you so much, and Willie would really appreciate this.
Why don't you introduce yourself, too?
I'm Joyce, Joyce Howell.
Old friend.
Sidekick.
Did you want to say anything?
Just thank you. Thank you very much, Willie. Would be really pleased. He loved the city of Minneapolis, and he loved the planet.
So I'm just going to read a little message from Willie to us all, and this is from one of the favorite songs, it was my favorite songs of his, that was referenced. And Robin's not quite sure if I should do this or not, so watch out. But this is from a longer song called Keep On Rockin' the Boat, actually been an inspiration for me. I can't sing, by Robin's instructions. Do you want to sing it? Okay. So I really did want to have a little music here, so if somebody wants to, you know, tap their toes or snap their, you can do that. And this is actually an incredibly funky song. But here's to the people who stand up and say no. Here's to the people who keep on rocking the boat. I don't know a lot, but there's one thing I know. Capitalismo, it don't have no soul. Compassion and justice won't never be done by no board of directors or no barrel of a gun. But people say, Willie, man, what can we do? I can't speak for myself. I can't speak for you. I got a voice, I'm going to holler. I got to fight, fight the power. I got to keep on walking, keep on talking, keep on rocking, keep on rocking that boat. Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right. Good morning again. I'm Lisa Bender, the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'll call our regular meeting of the February 15, 2019, city council meeting to order, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conom.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. The agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda from council members? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Those carry. And the agenda has been approved. Next, we have the minutes from our regular meeting of February 1st for acceptance. I will ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those minutes are accepted. And finally, we'll take a motion to refer petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is the reports from our standing committees, and we'll begin with a report from the Committee of the Whole, given by its chair, Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President, the Committee of the Whole brings forward one item today, which is the adoption of the city goals as part of the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan and related staff direction. And I move approval of this item.
Council Vice President has moved the committee's report. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I'd like to move two amendments to two of the goals. You should have those before you. I'd like to wait for a second before I speak to them.
Is there a second? There's been a second. Does everyone have, these are marked cow number 1-1. Councilmember Gordon, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, maybe you could just articulate. This has to do with two of the eight goals. One is public services, and the other one is on environmental justice. I mentioned these at Committee of the Whole. I think I foreshadowed exactly the one under public services. It is to move the modifier "high quality" to the end of the sentence. So it would read, "The city prioritizes reliable and equitable access to high-quality public services." And the other is on environmental justice. It's adding a reference to restoring and protecting our soil, water, and air. So the goal would read, "The city prioritizes sustainable practices and renewable resources to equitably address climate change while restoring and protecting our soil, water, and air." And I did send these to coordinator staff for review as well.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Councilmember Gordon's amendment? Council Vice President.
Do you want to comment on the amendment?
No.
Okay, perfect. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Those carry, so we'll consider the goals and strategic of the Strategic Race Equity Action Plan as amended. Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, you know, encourage my colleagues to support this, and really thank the staff who have been involved in working and developing this plan, predominantly Andrea, Ms. Andrea Larson, Ms. Joy Marsh Stevens, and so many others who have been really active over this past year in helping us develop to this point in our plan. We still have more work to do, but I think this is moving us in a very unique direction in embedding our race equity goals into our strategic plan. And so thank you to the staff for their work on this effort.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
I just want to thank the Council Vice President for her leadership in this as well, this term, moving this work forward. It's been difficult and a big project, and really appreciate seeing this here now, and that we're taking these next steps. And I don't think we'd be here without your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
I just want to thank the Council Vice President for her leadership in this as well, this term, moving this work forward. It's been difficult and a big project, and really appreciate seeing this here now, and that we're taking these next steps. And I don't think we'd be here without your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
I just want to thank the Council Vice President for her leadership in this as well, this term, moving this work forward. It's been difficult and a big project, and really appreciate seeing this here now, and that we're taking these next steps. And I don't think we'd be here without your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
I just want to thank the Council Vice President for her leadership in this as well, this term, moving this work forward. It's been difficult and a big project, and really appreciate seeing this here now, and that we're taking these next steps. And I don't think we'd be here without your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I will just also echo that sentiment and thank Council Vice President for your leadership in our first, really true, race equity plan that the city is developing and adopting. I think this has the, you know, I think that this plan, as implemented, will have a profound impact on how the city of Minneapolis operates, both internally, as we look at race equity in our budgeting, in our hiring, in all of the things that we do internally at the city, and as well as experimenting with this new technique of using really thoughtful, measurable deliverables as we take on three specific policy items as a pilot of this method. So I agree, I think without the leadership of the Vice President, this would be at a different point. And I'm excited that we're here, ready to get started on the work of implementing these goals and the priorities that we've identified together. So anything else? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conom.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 items.
That carries, and that has been adopted. The next report is from the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Good morning, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 10 items this morning for approval, as well as five items under unfinished business. I'll start with the standing committee items. Item number one is a Sunday sales license. Item number two are the liquor license approvals, and three are the renewals. Four are the gambling license renewals. Five are setting business license operating conditions. Six and seven are reinstating rental licenses with operating conditions. Item number eight is a land sale closing extension, and item number nine is our Great Streets Facade Improvement Grant Program. I'll note that these are allocating grants to the Camden Town Business and Area Coalition, Central Area Neighborhood Development Organization, the Lake Street Council, the Comas East Neighborhood Association, Sewer Redesign, the Southwest Business Association, West Broadway Area Coalition, and the Whittier Alliance. These are Great Streets program awards. I'll note that we do, these are two-year awards, so there are a number, eight or 10, that are already in progress. So I'm going to move items one through nine. And then I'm going to forward item 10 back to committee, because these were a number of really well-thought-out staff directions that came up, although we didn't take up the Upper Harbor Terminal. We are going to be taking it up on Tuesday, and these are some very thoughtful and important things that should be included in the larger Upper Harbor Terminal concept plan. So I'd like to have that all handled at the same time. So so far, I'd like to move items one through nine and return to committee item 10 so it can come forward with a larger package.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee items one through nine and moved to return item 10 back to committee. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conom.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 items.
That carries, and those items are adopted. At this time, I'll pause and make sure there's no objection to Councilmember Goodman's suggestion that we take up the unfinished business items that fall under this committee's work program. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, Councilmember Goodman, go ahead.
Finished business agenda item, there are five additional items. These are all rental license denials for properties throughout the city. They include a denial at 3115 Cedar Avenue, 2726 Gerard Avenue South, 2530 First Avenue South, 3554 Emerson Avenue South, and 316 Oak Grove. I will note that the committee had a lengthy conversation, and we have prepared findings of fact and conclusions of law on the recommendations of the administrative hearing officer to deny these licenses, and I'd like to move to deny them now.
Councilmember Goodman has moved to deny those rental licenses and the items under unfinished business. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conom.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 items.
Those carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we have the report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by the chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward four items for approval today. The first item actually includes many land sales, a little over 20 land sales, through our Minneapolis Homes Land Sales and Development Assistant Funding Program. Second item is approving $300,000 in funding for St. Stephen's Human Services for homeless outreach services in 2019, and this is renewable for up to an additional four years, subject to appropriate approvals. The third item is approving a contract with the Minnesota Home Ownership Center to provide oversight of financial wellness services for Minneapolis residents. And the fourth item is ratifying approval of the funding agreement with Minneapolis Public Housing Authority for the Stable Homes/Stable Schools Program. I will move all four items.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conom.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 items.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Next, we'll have the report from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward two items for consideration today. The first is the passage of two amending ordinances with residential energy disclosure, and the second is approving appointments and reappointments to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging Appointments. I move approval of these two items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
Yes, I would like to make an amendment on the first item.
Go ahead. I believe you have this one in front of us as well.
Correct. So if that's properly before us, I'm not sure if there is a second or not, but this is something we did talk about at Committee of the Whole as well. This was actually something that we heard some concerns about from staff when we specifically mentioned requiring an invoice with the scope of work on it. They suggested we change that to just say documentation. And this has to do with the wall insulation and options for your truth in sale of taxation. I'm happy to stand for more questions if committee members have it. I'm sure folks in the audience aren't quite sure what I'm talking about, but...
Councilmember Gordon has moved this amendment, which has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano, you want to speak on the underlying item?
Correct.
Perfect. So seeing no further discussion on the amendment, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The amendment carries, so Councilmember Palmasano, back to the motion as amended.
Thank you, Madam President. Also before you is a staff direction that I worked out with Councilmember Gordon's office, that I would like to accompany this ordinance. It is in front of you, and there was a slight change with my staff where we swapped it out for one that had a correct date on it. It originally said 3/4/18, and while I'd like to have done it back then, it's best to... What this staff direction does, if I might summarize, is it's asking the Clean Energy Partnership to work to help our city increase the capacity of home energy audit and home energy efficiency services provided. I was surprised in the beginning looking at of this ordinance procedurally, that there is an enormous backlog of people that voluntarily want to sign up their homes for home energy audits. And there is a, over, when I signed up for it myself, there was over an eight-month wait time to be able to access this, even for people who maybe don't qualify for any sort of assistance or aren't in an opportunity zone. I think that there is a lot of demand for people who are not selling their home, but who actually want to live in their home, and just know what are the first things they might want to address to help make their own dwelling units more energy efficient. So there have also been some significant changes to this ordinance since originally proposed, and that enables me and I suspect others to be really supportive. Thank you. This took a lot of work. The public hearing on this was really interesting to sit and watch and hear how much you were able to grow stakeholder support on it. So this staff direction helps, well, it directs our Sustainability Office to come back and help us see what would it take to try to meet existing voluntary demand for some of these kinds of services. And I submit that for you, along with this ordinance.
Thank you. Council Vice President.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the staff direction and in support, but also just in hoping that we can identify programs and communities of color to employ in helping us to address this issue and bring more equity and diversification of the workforce that is doing these energy audits. So thank you for bringing this staff direction.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the staff direction? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That staff direction carries, and that brings us back to the report as moved by the Chair with the amended items, and the staff direction, Councilmember Schrader.
I just want to briefly speak to the ordinance and just want to thank staff. I think we don't really understand this moment in history yet, but I would say that the world has fundamentally changed. Last year, when the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, some of our best minds in the world came out and said that our best efforts, that our most ambitious efforts were not going to be enough to stop the threat of climate effects, we need to do more. Like, it was a huge wake-up call. I'm humble enough to admit that this is really only a first step, that this ordinance will just, really just hit the tip of the iceberg. But I look forward to working with all of my colleagues to move other ordinances forward and to make sure that Minneapolis is well-positioned to survive climate change. And I want to, you know, first and foremost, you know, thank staff for all the work that they've put into this. Thank my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Gordon. And finally, also thank Ramon Garwood and Carly Weinman, our staff respectively, who have worked so hard on this. And I thank everyone on council for their support.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the committee report? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 items.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards nine items today. Item one is the 2019 Concrete Streets Rehabilitation Program. Item two is the contract with Specialized Environmental Technologies for processing disposal of yard waste, organics, fall bunched and swept leaves, and standard street sweepings. Item three is a contract amendment with Hennepin County Transit Orient Development Program for the 4th Street/Southeast Street Reconstruction Project. Item four is agreement with Minnesota Department of Transportation related to East Street Reconstruction Project. Item five is an agreement with University of Minnesota for a shared-use access road. Item six is the temporary easement agreement with University of Minnesota for the 10th Avenue Southeast Bridge Project. Item seven is a lease agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad with the 10th Avenue Southeast River Bridge Project. Item eight is a bid for Midtown City Industrial Reconstruction Project Phase 2. And item nine is the special service district appointments. All appointees are listed, and with that, Madam President, I forward all items as submitted.
Councilmember Wright has moved the committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 items.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Finally, we have the report of the Zoning and Planning Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will be bringing forward six items today. Item one is the denial of demolition of historic resource uphealt for the property at 215 Ninth Street South. Item two is the denial of a variance and site plan review for conditions of approval appeal for the property located at 901 Winter Street Northeast. Note that the committee also modified the condition of approval in items 2.1. Item three is the appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission. Item four is a street vacation application submitted by Greco and the Minneapolis Park Board. Item five is the rezoning at 901 Winter Street Northeast. And item six is the adding of a commemorative street name of Richard Estes Avenue to the portion of Plymouth Avenue North. And I also want to take the time to thank the family and friends for coming out today. I move approval for the Zoning and Planning Committee report.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to highlight that we're going to be putting in this commemorative sign for Richard Estes, who ran the Estes Funeral Home for 60 years in North Minneapolis, and I think that, I was a little frustrated that this wasn't coming a little sooner, right? But I think it's actually appropriate because it's Black History Month, and I couldn't think of a better way to go through the month than to have this come through our committee and hopefully go up really soon. And I just want to thank April for being here and all the hard work that you've done and the conversations that we've had, and the work that your family has done on behalf of North Minneapolis, and this is more than well-earned, and so just wanted to thank you for being here.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 items.
That carries, and those items are adopted. The next order of business is reports.
Yeah.
Yeah. And thank you again to the family for being here. We had a really wonderful presentation at committee and just honoring the life of someone who was such an important leader in the community and whose work went far beyond the day-to-day work of the funeral home into the community and just cared for so many people. So thank you for being here, and we're so happy to be able to honor him today. The next order of business is reports from our special committees, and we have a report from the Executive Committee, given by the Vice President, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee sends us two items this week. Item number one is referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the reappointment of Ellen McVeigh to the Civil Service Commission. Item number two is referring to the Ways and Means Committee collective bargaining agreement with the Electricians Unit. I move both items.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.[1539.83]